Oh, yeah, yeah.
I saw you in there talking.
Yeah, my, uh, um, my dad's parked in the car and I, I, I wanted to see a picture of it. It's been a long time. But, um, yeah, somebody, it was like five minutes, somebody like.
People just scour that group chat.
It was crazy.
Oh, yeah.
It was absolutely insane. And then people were like, oh, we missed Dr. Booker, that's my dad.
We missed your father.
Cause like, he kinda, I'll be honest, he kinda disappeared into like, he, 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 probably ten thousand babies in Central PA and then.
Yeah.
He had a stroke and they like, I mean, he's fine now, but like, family basically ended his career, but he didn't retire.
What year was that? The new sponsor?
Oh, my goodness. Um, it probably been like early 2000s.
Yeah. Well, December spring, December spring closed in October, so.
Yeah, and I think it was like 2000 and I think that what people said at the.
See, I, I heard it. I got there pretty early on and I saw it.
Yeah, no, there, there's, there's like a bunch of comments.
Well, my, my dad drove Super Sportsman.
Oh, nice.
That's from the spring from 99.
Okay, so it has 95 reactions, 23 comments. It apparently was 1995.
Okay.
He retired in the late 90s, so my dad's probably 95. Yeah. And I know I had like, as a kid, I had some.
Yes, so there is a meeting on 9:30 about.
It's not the fire station?
I, I will say.
Let, let me take two.
I, I will say, looking to see how, how much lower everything is than that sidewalk here makes me nervous. Sure.
Don't need to do anything, so.
Hey Greg.
Why?
I will contribute a small amount because my child's moving home. Have my money. It's expensive to raise your child out.
Like, ask him how I'm on parole. He said, you can stay here as long as you want, but once you're.
Thank you.
Thank you for thinking, man. You posted euros.
Well, you're the co-parent.
No, listen.
Stop making, you must tell me.
No, I want to make sure it's going well.
It's gonna be our new swimming pool.
I call them the cat, not the cat. Oh, okay, then I'm. Yeah, sorry.
Not in my.
Okay. So that's why I said.
Um, and I was gonna say, I, I did speak to a little bit about what we do in Milton, that's what wasn't secret until we get involved, so we can talk about it after.
I know it's trying to be cryptic, yeah. Yeah. If you can, it'll be fun, but then, then I want to set up a time to talk to you then. I'll send you a message.
Sarah Everton. The meeting is canceled on the night.
Okay.
So, yeah, well, all evening.
Perfect. Then I won't sit on my couch like Spencer.
I've got a million.
So with the bar like Spencer.
The fancy drink and an umbrella?
I mean, I made it this far and I've gotten promoted for other things, so. I think it read it to some degree. Yeah. I tried to do it on Madison and it just like didn't work. Well, I wasn't, I wasn't open to it.
I'm getting.
You guys ready?
Yeah.
Good evening. As you can tell, Kyle's not here, so I'm gonna be running the meeting this evening. Please take it easy on me if you wouldn't mind. Grateful. Uh, we're calling to order, the meetings of the McCasburg Borough Council are being recorded and livestreamed for the purposes of transparency and increased public access. The livestream, along with the recordings of previously held meetings, can be accessed on the borough's YouTube page. Now for the pledge of allegiance. My pledge of allegiance to the banner of the United States of America and to the public purpose stands one nation under God, indivisible, with the great injustice. Roll call. Here.
Here.
Here. Here.
Councilman Martin?
Here.
Councilman O'Neil?
Here.
Mayor Ritter?
Here.
Solicitor James?
Here.
Engineer Rigolsky?
Here.
Chief Glennie?
Here.
CEC Hockenberry?
Here.
Manager Donovan?
Here.
We have a quorum.
Thank you. Approval of the agenda. Is there anything to add or remove from the consent agenda or the regular agenda?
I would like to just make a note that, um, down under the Finance Administration and Ordinance, uh, discussion and action to advertise rather than approve the 2026 proposed budget, just for clarification. That was a typo on our end.
Thank you. Anything else? Any amendments or changes to the proposed minutes? Hearing none. Citizens comments. Citizen input on items concerning Borough Council is welcome during this time. Comment, comments are limited to three minutes. For an accurate public record, citizens are asked to approach the podium and state their name and address. By request, written or electronic submissions may be given to the camp, the Borough Secretary to be entered into the public record. Do we have anybody for public comments, sir?
Ron Trace 304, North Arch Street. No removal ordinance. It's snow today. There is a lot of sidewalks, including right down here on Allen Street, that were not shelved yet. Is the borough gonna enforce it? There's a lot of these are the same properties every time it snows, they do not shovel. I don't know in some of them, if it's a situation where the tenants think the landlord should be doing it and the landlord thinks the tenant should be doing it, but I know some of those properties are owned by the people and they're just lazy. And it's not gonna get any better because, uh, it's not gonna warm up. We're gonna have that hard crusty stuff once it, uh, refreezes and all again, so.
That's it.
Yes.
Anyone else for public comment?
Yes, sir.
This isn't about snow removal. My name's Keith Lawone and I live on Mitchell Drive. And, uh, for the last several weeks, there have been increasing truck traffic from State Road down to Mulberry. And even though there are signs that say local, local deliveries only, these are out of state trucks. I spent 50 years in the trucking business. I understand truck drivers like to make shortcuts. The signs, I did talk to a police officer two or three days ago. I told him about the situation. He'd said he understood what was going on. I think when you're going north on Mulberry, you're, you're, you're seeing the sign on the street itself. Not before you turn in. And that's, I see, as soon as the guy turns in, I'm almost certain kind of mentality is, I'm just gonna drive through and, and hope nobody sees me. Today, while I was shuttling, shuttling so, uh, I did have an opportunity to see a truck that I made contact with the driver. And, and I told him, you have new jersey inspections sticker on your truck. This is not a local delivery. Out. And, um, so I think, if there is a solution, I think the solution is on State Road, the sign has to be on State Road before you turn on to Mitchell Drive. Same way on Mulberry. I think that'll fix it. And if not, I'll be sitting out in my driveway waiting to catch them.
We appreciate that.
Thank you. Thank you.
Anyone else for public comment? It seemed done.
Yes.
Sorry, do you need a motion to vote on to accept the agendas?
We do.
As amended.
You, so you don't need to vote on the amendment, but you need to vote on the entire. Yeah.
I'll make a, I'll make a motion.
Okay, thank you.
As, as amended.
Thank you.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Thank you. All right, consent agenda. I have a motion to approve the consent agenda.
I'll make that motion.
I have a second.
I'll second.
Any comments? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Passes as well. Up to our presentation time. Do you have it over there? Would council like to join me and the mayor down in the, in the well? Sometimes we have maybe one or two people present, but really tonight, Sue Erbman, we all, our entire community is presenting our grant. For amazing body of work. I met Sue myself fifty years ago or so. Sue is my sponsor in Rotary, uh, a long time ago. And then when I got on the chamber board, Sue was president. And then when I got on the DMP board, which was the mainstream McCasburg board at the time, Sue was president. Sue has been involved in so many organizations outside of Simpson within our community and has taken the Simpson Library from what it was to uh, just an amazing, amazing organization. So, we are very grateful. If anybody else would like to say anything in advance, if you'd like to, go free. We have a resolution for you that, um, will be. Whereas the citizenry and officials of the Borough of McCasburg, Cumberland County, Pennsylvania desire within to express their recognition and congratulations to Sue Erbman for her service as Executive Director of the Joseph T. Simpson Public Library for 29 years. And whereas Sue Erbman has brought the library to where it is today by coordinating the move of Simpson Street to, not literally where it is today, Simpson Street to its current Walden Street location by renovating the upper level and the Walden Street location in 2003. And whereas Sue Erbman has brought the Simpson Public Library into the new age by implementing computerized catalog and book circulation system in 1996, intentionally transitioning the library to more computer and internet-based services, adding free public internet computers in 1998, and upgrading the library's collection as, by adding new formats such as DVDs, audiobooks, on CD, eBooks and e-audiobooks. And whereas Sue Erbman spearheaded the process of achieving standards for excellence, accelerated, accredited, sorry, by the Pennsylvania Association of Non-Problem Organizations in 2015. The first public library in Pennsylvania to receive this designation. And whereas the Borough McCasburg officials and staff recognize Sue Erbman for her diligent and loyal service to the Borough of McCasburg citizens to provide the community center of cert, of learning and leisure to the McCasburg community. Now, therefore, be of resolve by the Borough Council and the officials of the Borough of McCasburg, Cumberland County, Pennsylvania, with the power and the authority of the same, do hereby affix our signatures below with best wishes and thanks for continuing to make the Borough of McCasburg a good place to live. Thank you.
So, thank you, Sean, and for all council, so. Time does fly faster than, than you believe. And it's hard to believe it has been 29 years. And I'm thrilled with the progress the library has made. And extremely thrilled and excited about the potential for the learning and book sales center across the street. So, probably haven't been part of that, uh, and able to see that through from start to finish. So. It, it's not just me that makes the library what it is. It's the community, it's the funders, it's the townships and boroughs who provide money. It's the patrons, it's the staff, it's the community project. So, there's lots of opportunities to continue to grow for the future. And I would like to ask Elizabeth Seidel to come forward. She goes by Lyndee. Lyndee is my successor. Her fourteenth on the job. We've had the opportunity to have some time together and I'll be with her till the end of the month to try to transfer much information with her. So, Lyndee has a couple words she'd love to share right now.
Yeah, okay. I'll stand. Hi, everybody. Say, oh, that's okay. Um, hi, so I'm, I'm listening to Seidel. I'm the, I feel like I should address everybody in the room. Hi. New director, yes. I'm very excited to be here. I immediately came, uh, most recently from York County Library, so I was their district consultant. Nobody knows what that means and that's okay. Uh, I did library stuff and that's what you need to know. Um, and I'm here and I'm really excited. It's been really great to work with Sue. Big, big shoes to fill. I already heard that tonight and I'm gonna continue to hear it, um, probably for the next 29 years. Um, but it's, it's good and I'm, I'm excited. With everything, for the, you know, support of the municipality, I've noticed has been really wonderful. Um, and I just, I appreciate everything that has led up to this point and I'm looking forward to working with you all, um, moving forward. And if you don't have a library card, please come get one.
I met with Lizzie for lunch the other weekend. I have to say that the library is. All right, launch photo and grab, jump in the picture.
Everybody squish in, get cozy.
What do you say, are you done? Just wanna make sure. Nobody wants to walk one of them.
Yeah, call him back.
Call him back.
Yeah, come on.
We're also tonight honoring the Halloween committee. Folks, the Halloween committee, Jeff, you wanna come on up? The Halloween committee has been around for, uh, can you hear us, Jeff? I'm not coming up to that. Yeah, no, no, hit it. Jeff has been my lead on the Halloween, uh, maybe for years, but, um, when the organization that was running the Halloween parade decided that they no longer could, uh, a group of people from our community decided that it was important enough to, to pick up the mantle. Um, and it's been how long?
From 1999.
So, I remember it's been 26 years. 26 years. So, uh, we, we, this year, they're transitioning from being under the chamber to being under the borough and what an amazing thing that was with the number of meetings we had to have and the coordination with the chair and, uh, just an amazing thing. So, we wanted to honor all of it by having them all come up and just, uh, thank them for the work that they've done. So, long as you guys are on. Everybody was on the committee, John McTernan? See you over there. So, the ruse was, uh, that we would get the committee here and thank them so much for the work that they have done this year, but also we're saying thank you to the ones that are leaving us after so many years of. Have you been in charge the entire time?
I'm not in charge.
Been all that could be for a while. So, we have, we have resolutions for each of the people that, that are going to be moving on. Jeff, would you like to say a couple words?
Well, certainly could not have done this over the years without, of course, the entire committee, but Anne, Kate Harris, uh, a couple of other examples, Jeff and Krista Falcone are moving on, they're retiring from this. The rest of us hopefully are gonna transition over and continue on as a committee, uh, under the, the new rec committee. There we go. And they were part of it this year and worked very well together, but I also just wanna say, there's a couple of people that are not here with us that were instrumental in this from the very beginning, including, uh, they must be mentioned, Gail McTernan, um, Terry Hope and his entire family, and from the fire police, Mike Mills. Um, early on, those, those people were instrumental in what we're doing and why we're still here today and why this thing continues on. And I wanna make sure their names were mentioned, uh, for the record. And of course, we could have done this all these years without Jeff Palm, Chamber Commerce. Uh, sponsors and mainly our presenting sponsor for many years, Lawrence Chevrolet, so shout out to them. Our Borough Police, uh, our Highway Department, our Fire Department, um, the new Events Committee, um, and School District, School Police. There's so many people, organizations. I'm gonna say three others, the Legion and VFW are always a big part of this for us. And now, most recently, the addition of the Lions Club and their help. They were huge this year.
They were huge.
So, so it's, it's us, we're, we're, we live in the, it's a community event and couldn't do it without everyone else. And so, thank you. Here's another new member of our committee who shouldn't be standing up here too.
Well, I'm just kind of.
No, you're kind of. Len is joining us this year. It's a great transition and it's actually shouting. And our Lions Club as well, and those, so come on up as well and just be recognized for that, so we can say thank you for the time you put in and you brought all your people with you and we appreciate that. We're gonna need a.
Uh, the resolution states, um, the citizenry, uh, and officials of the Borough of McCasburg, Cumberland County, Pennsylvania desire therewith to express their gratitude to Anne Edgar and Paul. Uh, the Halloween parade can, whereas the Halloween parade committee and its members have provided the Borough residents with a Halloween parade for the past 26 years. And whereas the Borough of McCasburg officials recognize that a group of citizens stepped up to continue to continue the beloved tradition of having the Halloween parade for our community. And the Borough Council of McCasburg want to honor them upon their retirement from the committee for their dedicated service and willingness to give their time, their talent for decades in order to make the Borough of McCasburg a spooky good place to live. And now therefore be followed by the Borough Council and the officials of the Borough of McCasburg, Cumberland County, Pennsylvania. And with the power and authority of the same, do hereby affix our signatures below to Resolution 22, 2025 in this recognition enacted by.
Thank you so much.
It may not be in order. Kate Harris?
Jeff?
I will take that as well. And it's by Krista.
Yeah, I love the charity. I'm gonna pitch to you, I'm gonna say, first I met, uh, Sue. That Sue, that's great. She was gonna recognize my name because we were always late returning books. Spots that don't worry about, we count.
I guess now officially.
I'll manufacture something about you, Laura.
All right, regular agenda, Finance Administration and Ordinance. How to manage it, would you care to read?
Absolutely. So, discussion and action to advertise the 2026 proposed budget.
I so moved.
Have a second?
I'll second.
Joe got the second? Any discussion?
Just wanna say that, again, we appreciate John, your leadership as the Chair on the committee. And that, uh, the Finance Committee's done a great job again this year, I think, and the staff has done a great job, especially in transition year. So, thank you to you and the team for doing such a great job helping get everything ready. We built on the successes we had last year and the year before, and the process was much easier this year. And I think that it was, uh, more inclusive and set the supper even more growth moving forward. So, the, uh, financial governance that this body brings to the borough has been absolutely astounding in the last four years. And it's been, it's been transformational. And the fact that taxes haven't been raised, but we've been able to maintain and increase services, um, is really fantastic. And though he's not here, uh, I'd like to just give a shout out to our former manager, Lane Thompson, for all of his great work for the last couple of years as well. And, and also Kyle Miller. So, but thank you for your leadership in the committee. You'll be missed next year for sure.
Hope to be on it. Wink, wink. Um, thank you. All in favor? Aye.
All opposed? All right, next.
Discussion and action to approve the settlement agreement with ICGM Group for the HVAC contract 2025-05M for the 219 East Main Street renovation contract.
Have a motion?
I'll make the motion.
Have a second?
I'll second.
Any discussion? Thank you for prepping us very well for this. Appreciate it. Hearing none? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Nothing else for finance at this time, municipal and community outreach. We don't have any agenda items, community and economic development. Agenda items, public works and safety. Agenda items, Public Works and Safety?
Okay. We'll have a chief?
Yes. So tonight's, tonight's attendee officer that we're doing once a month is Oscar Corbin Dodge. Oscar Dodge has been with us for a few years now. He attended Chippensburg University, or Chemistry of All Things. He has, like I said, been with us for two years. Oscar Dodge is, is very acquisitive and does an excellent job. He is, he pays close attention to detail. He's a, he loves working and cleaning the department firearms and guns, and he is an armor. He is a rifle armor, and he's soon to go to handgun armor school. Is that correct?
Glock armor, Chief.
Glock armor. And we are looking at some other trainings for Oscar Dodge to include a lot of traffic and works related things, and kind of maybe look at it, perhaps sending him to a mix-up school, which is a truck inspection, the lower end of that, and see if he has some interest in that and some accident investigation. I'm gonna let him say hello, and he has, he has some things he'd like to say, and I'll apologize if he looks like a burglar, like burglar.
It's cold out, right?
Sporting the winter look.
It's cold.
First day of snow, right? So my name is Corbin Dodge. I've been hired as a McCannsburg Police Officer since May of 2023. Like Chief said, I studied at Chippensburg University specifically with chemistry. And I think chemistry is one of the coolest things in the world, and it led me to becoming a police officer. I think it's the greatest job in the world. It allows me to help people, be in the community, and again, it's just an overall great job, and McCannsburg is a great place to do it. Most recently, I would say, I know Borough Council voted, I believe you guys voted to get new graphics on our cars. I've actually had citizens tell me the cars look great. I love the way they look. I think it's awesome. We have some new cars, too, which is great. Who doesn't love a new car, right? But yeah, things are great when I'm not working in McCannsburg as a police officer. I enjoy fishing, spend the time with my wife, and just enjoy being outdoors. That's all I had.
Who's your favorite author?
My favorite author? I've been reading most. The last book I read, Can't Hurt Me by David Goggins. So, big Goggins guy, you know what I mean? Stay physical, especially being a police officer and stuff like that, mind toughness.
I think, Joe, you and I are the only two ship guys up here, is that right?
Yeah. Yeah.
That was a great.
And now you got a third one.
Back in the eighties.
Yeah, now we got a third one, yeah.
Yeah.
You can ask your question.
Well, I asked him originally, and I can't remember what you run your mile in.
What I run my mile in, what I did in the academy, what I do now.
Let's do the academy in now.
Academy, my fastest was like a six forty-five. Now probably closer to seven thirty, maybe eight. I'm still, let's say.
You've not run most of the other officers, I think.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I think I could outrun Sergeant Lazaric, maybe.
I think you could outrun Sergeant McCormick, too.
I, I think we should have a little race. Would you be willing? Yeah.
Maybe.
Fifty-yard dash. Yes, we will race you.
Bob, we gonna race?
I'll just, I'll just, I'll just give you the crown. I will say that I've had occasion to speak to you on, on different things over the years, and you, you, you represent the department very well, and you comport yourself very well. So we're glad you're here, and thank you so much for everything you do.
Thank you for saying that, you know what I mean? I just, I love being a police officer. I do think it is the best job on earth, and that's why God put me on this earth, so.
Awesome, awesome. What is the best part of being an officer in McCannsburg?
Man, that's a tough one. I think the best part about being a police officer, a lot of people in this area are very pro-police. Again, you'll see areas where people don't like the police as much in some areas, but it's a very pro-police area. Everybody's very friendly. I've had people just wave at me on calls, they talk to me something about their day. I think it's great.
That is great. It was, I was coming back from the Halloween Parade, actually, crossing, driving, and there was a police officer walking across the street in front of me, and I said, hey, you're jaywalking, and he did a turn around and did a moonwalk through the rest of the road. You know, I love our police department. You guys are all like that. You're very friendly, and the community loves you. It's great.
You have to be friendly. That's how you get people to talk to you, you know what I mean? Build a relationship with the community.
Yeah.
Very important.
We appreciate that. Anybody else have anything for the?
Oh, I have a question.
Yes.
Where'd you go to high school?
Where'd I go to high school? I graduated from Chippensburg High School.
Oh, oh, you get very far, did you?
More than that easier.
Where were you born? That'll stretch it. Where were you born?
Yeah, I was originally, I was born and raised in Denver, Colorado. The mountains out there.
What, what is your prediction for the weather this winter?
My prediction? I'm hoping we get a wizard.
Why'd you ask?
I have to get some, like, tactical skis, you know what I mean?
They're not in the budget.
How about maybe some studded tires on those new e-bikes?
Thank you for being here.
We appreciate it.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
Thanks, Chief.
Any else?
Appreciate it.
Thank you, Chief. Any else from the committee?
No, that's it. Thank you.
Chief, just a comment. Thank you for setting this up, that this happens every couple of weeks.
You employ a bunch of ham, so.
Give you a mic in some time.
Yep.
Nothing under Property Parks and Rec or Personnel Committee, which brings us to Citizens' Comment. Are there any citizens' comments? Come on up, Lizzie.
Hi. So I am addressing the homework that was said that I handed out to everybody, the green folders. I just am coming to talk about the library and present some information and some highlights from 2024, just so you have some context for what this is instead of me just handing it out. I don't give out homework. I'm not a teacher. I'm just a librarian. I make you get a library card. So just some highlights from 2025, so we can, just to kind of talk about the library a little bit. Color Your World was the theme of our 2025 Summer Learning Program, and we had lots of people attending. By my math, over a thousand people participated. So that's coming into the library, that's attending programs, that's reading books. So that was wonderful this year. Next year's program, I think, is something about archaeology, digging or something. So look forward to that. And then also, in partnership with that, over fourteen hundred, oh, I have a much more inflated number in here, I think I have fourteen thousand, fourteen hundred people partnered, came to Go Cumberland, which is a partnership we have with Wellspan, where people can visit local parks and complete hikes to complete the summer learning program, in partnership with the summer program, so. And then something also very exciting, with grant funds from the Pennsylvania Broadband Authority, we were able to very recently purchase laptops, computers for in-house use. So many people, hopefully, I hope you know, we have a, like, desktop computers people can use. So now we have laptops people can use around the library, and they use for, like, telehealth appointments and job, job search and studying and those kinds of things. We've had a hundred and twenty-four checkouts of those just since October. Yeah, so great need for those. Many of you, I'm sure, know renovations to the former Agway Building were completed in December of last year to the new Joseph T. Simpson Public Library Learning and Book Sales Center. So there's additional meeting space in there, and there's lots of space for friends to have their book sale that's right across the street, if you don't know where it is, if you get lost, it's just there. Our capital campaign fundraising efforts continue to fund the renovation and our, I see my time's winding down, so I'm gonna try to, and then we have developed our 2025 to 2027 strategic plan to guide our work into the future. That's in your handouts as well as online, if anybody is interested in looking at it, talking more about it, I'm open. We also have our annual report from 2024 in there. Hopefully, in the next couple of months, once we have 2025 numbers, I'll get you an updated version, so you can see all of the updated work that we are doing, and then just information about the library generally in here. That's, oh, and twenty-five seconds left. Look at that. So again, thank you all. If you have any questions for me now, I'm happy to take them. My card is in your folder. Please reach out for any questions or concerns. I'd love to get you in for a tour, show you the library, and show you what you're supporting, and get to meet everybody more personally. But with eight seconds left, is there any questions? I've never seen, I've been to a number of municipal meetings, I've never had the timer.
It's effective.
I'm in it. I never know. Because I would have thought I was.
Thank you for being here.
Yeah, do you have any, if there's any questions? I also love that you asked about the favorite author. I felt like that was, I'd like that you asked that when I was in the room. I like your answer. Or favorite book. Thank you, yes.
Thank you.
Welcome.
Yes, thank you so much. Thank you.
See you soon. Any other citizens' comments? Hearing none? Any other business? Sarah? Anybody else?
So I just wanted to let Borough Council know that Sarah and I had a conversation with the Pennsylvania Municipal League this past week, which is an organization similar to PSAB or the Pennsylvania Boroughs Association. So as a show of good faith, they're giving us a one-year free membership, so we will have access to different trainings and seminars and things like that for this year upcoming in 2026 for free to see how we like it and feel about the different opportunities that they offer. So it just gives us a few more opportunities to make sure that we're honing our skills and following best management practices.
Thank you. Mr. Mayor?
Nothing.
Nothing.
Thank you, Chief.
I have one thing I just want to say to Mayor Ritter. Thank you very much. He took the time to swear me in for my next term earlier this evening. I appreciate him, and I appreciate your, your committed service, too, over the last, what, twenty-eight years? Twenty-eight, Jack?
Yeah, it's close enough.
Thank you.
A couple things. So there's a dine and donate for the library tomorrow night, or tomorrow, sorry, seven AM to nine PM, December third, and you can follow up that, maybe your dinner, with their Night at the Theater with the Friends of the Simpson Library, so you can get tickets to Tiny Toes Christmas Carol at the library or through the library. Just a little plug there. I also recently took a meeting with somebody from the Carroll Valley Rail Trail, so more information will be coming down the pipe from that. But it's, it's definitely something that I think aligns with the Borough's community of active transportation, so I think, get an update and see what we can do to help with these, something that could be helpful.
I have nothing.
Mike, first of all, I just want to thank the new manager. Can I still say that? I don't know. You guys have really done a great job so far making, I mean, Snowstorm, all the things that you've been able to get done in the last number of weeks. Thank you for your hard work in the transition.
Thank you. I would say it's very much a team effort, and you have a good team compiled here, so I'm looking forward to getting to know each of them a little bit more and, and working with them in 2026.
And to those of the citizens that came, thank you very much for coming. It's a lot more fun when there's people here than it is when it's an empty room, so grateful for all of you for whatever reason you came, so. Thank you. That's all we have. Have a great night.